I call the 3:00 PM session of the August 23rd, 2022, meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. I'd like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you that if you want to address the Board specifically, you must sign up seven days in advance of any of our regular meetings to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the Board. However, the public may address the Board under the Agenda item, matters presented by the public that will take up later this evening in our meeting. Again, welcome everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. We do have with us a new member of the media here today. Would you please stand so that folks will recognize you and tell us just a little bit about what you're doing?
My name is Maddie Oliver. I'm with the Henry County Enterprise. I just started a couple of weeks ago, so I'm still kind of getting the hang of things. But I'm really excited to have the opportunity to get more involved with my community and I'm really excited to see what I want to accomplish.
All right, thank you. Our first item of consideration for business today is Agenda item number five, Items of Consent. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the items of consent.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer.
Agenda item number six, A Monthly Report on Delinquent Tax Collection Efforts. We have with us County Treasurer Scott Grinstaff. Scott, welcome.
Welcome. This is a report as of end of the month of July 29th, 2022. Personal property collection, we collected 92.41% of the 21 personal property taxes. We collected $142,000 during the month. Real estate collection as of July 29th, we collected 94.18% of the 21 real estate taxes. We collected $69,165 during the month. Since the 1st of January 2022, TACS has collected $353,621. We are, uh, we stopped so far from the month of August at 10. We'll announce that on September 16th, we have another judicial sale scheduled with some non-judicial parcels involved. And our real estate bill process is moving along. Hopefully they'll be in the mail by the week after Labor Day.
All right.
And if there's any questions, my door is open.
All right, thank you, Scott.
Agenda item number seven, A Monthly Update from the Martinsville Henry County Economic Development Corporation. We have with us Mark Heath. Mark, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, it's good to be able to provide a little update. In August, for August 2022, in small business, in our other business development division, our Small Business Saturday, an annual event will be held November 26th. Again, our staff will be giving out through local restaurants gift certificates for $10 to allow you to go to restaurants that you might not otherwise have been to or be your favorite. The target is to give out 500 of these certificates. We had over 400 last year. We hope to increase that. Cupons will be coming out a little bit later. You can pick them up downtown in our office at the former visitor's center. We're on the first floor of NCI. The date is November 26th. There'll be plenty of opportunity for people to take advantage of that. You can see there are numerous and various types of companies our staff has had visits with and inquiries continue to help in a lot of ways with certifications for SLAM and other business assets like that. And also Valerie Harper attended a meeting in Danville with the prime contractors for the secret casino project so that they can take advantage of the set aside for small and minority owned businesses. So we're getting ahead of that. You can see down in Florida, we're, for the month of June, Henry County is holding flat 3.2. Overall, we're down a little bit. The county, uh, the city rather came down to our overall, which is three and a half. Still virtually 100% employment in our community. We have begun work. We'll be submitting an application through the DBRS grant, through the Virginia Economic Development Partnership. We received $1 million in this grant program last year. This time around, we're going to be asking for 18 million to help us put together the money we need to fully grade the 200 acres, a 200 acre site with lot one. So it will have, in essence, a 150 acre pad, a rail serve pad. It'll be the first 150 acre rail serve pad in Virginia that's fully certified with utilities. We're very hopeful about that and we'll keep you up to date as we go through that process this fall. You can see the various companies and organizations that our staff, particularly Spencer Johnson, provides research for. This is an ongoing thing, the service that we provide industry on a monthly basis of all types of information. Our tourism staff had 27 site visits and consultation on the phone. You can see a large number of companies, again, very, very varying type and all types of requests. Had packet information or packet requests, nine, nine folks. You can see the states they came from. Welcome bags went out to different events that were here. We continue to put out our visitor guides in bulk. We provided 175 of the Virginia Society of Technology that was here at NCI. We had 100 at the Smith River Fest this past weekend. And in all, you can see 275 were delivered to various community enterprises. There are over 30 locations where you can get our information in your hand throughout the community. So we continue to keep those stock. Smith River Fest was a real good success this year. We had, to be exact, staff tells me 2,072 people there. That was good attendance. We had good weather. Feedback has been great. You can see all the types of things that had to be done in advance of that as our staff worked with Henry County Parks and Rec to bring that very well received annual event to the community. Dick and Willie had 4,096 walkers in the last month. And we're staff creating several ads for the Henry County Fair for Oktoberfest and other types of news outlets. We submitted the County Fair at Wilters Parkway and it's going out through AAA councils to 400 of those across the US and Canada. In talent development, we will again be conducting the MICS program this year, which is a partnership with Harvest where we take teachers from Martinsville County into industry to teach them about the jobs that are here so they can go back in classroom and give better information to their students about the types of jobs that they have. Been a very successful program that we have run for six or seven years now. Outdoor recreation, yeah, there was a stakeholders meeting with the New Riverside Park as we go through that planning process. Our staff was working with county staff on that. And if you go to our Martinville Main website, there's a new section called Get Involved. We had some very positive, very positive feedback from folks that said, well, what, you know, how do you know where you go if you need a 24-hour plumber? How do you find these types of things in our community? So we tweaked that website. We've added this function to it and we think it's going to be very well received. I'll be happy to answer any particular questions.
Anyone have any questions with Mark this time?
Thank you, Mark.
Agenda item number eight will take up numerous financial matters. Eight A, An Awarded Contract Referencing the Radio System Microwave Consultant for Public Safety. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is asking the Board to award a contract to Bill AG Consulting at a price not to exceed $2,000 to assess the existing radio microwave system and assist with developing a request for proposal to make updates to the system. As you probably know, the current radio system was built in 2009 and is used by all the fire and EMS volunteers in the county, public safety department, and insurance office. The microwave radio portion of the system reached its end of service, full life, in 2021. Mr. Tatum requested assistance of a consultant to ensure all options to update or replace the pieces of radio communications infrastructure already. And you may recall, but it's board policy to approve the use of all consultants. That's why we're bringing it to you.
In regard to awarding of this contract, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board to award the contract to Bill AG Consulting at a price not to exceed $2,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight B, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Asset Forfeiture Funds for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Commonwealth Attorney Andrew Nestor is asking the Board to approve an additional appropriation of $8,500 from state asset forfeiture funds to cover cost of travel expenses for his office.
What action would the Board like to take in regard to this additional appropriation?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve the additional appropriation of $8,500.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight C, An Additional Appropriation Referencing Asset Forfeiture Funds for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the Board to appropriate $19,566 from the state asset forfeiture funds for the purchase of radio headsets for the special weapons and tactics team, better known as SWAT. Sheriff Perry explains the need to improve communication capabilities during tactical and special operations for the safety of the deputies. And Sheriff Perry, is he or should you have any questions?
In regard to this additional appropriation, what action would the Board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board to approve the appropriation of $19,566 from the state asset forfeiture funds for the purchase of the radio headsets.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight D, An Award of Contract Referencing Courthouse Security Improvement for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
Sheriff Lane Perry is asking the Board to award a sole source contract in the amount of $133,500 to Montgomery Technology Systems LLC of Greenville, Alabama, to replace the security locks, access controls, and camera system in the Henry County courthouse. Sheriff Perry explains this system is old, unrepairable, and needs to be replaced to provide a higher level of security within the courthouse. The purchasing department has approved MTS as a sole source vendor to allow for standardization of the items, locks, access controls, and cameras that are at the new adult detention center. The funding for this project was included in the capital improvements budget from a couple of years ago.
Okay, in regard to awarding of this contract, what is the desire of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the sole source contract of $133,500 to Montgomery Technology Systems LLC to replace the security locks and access controls and the camera system in the courthouse.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Eight E, An Additional Appropriation and Award of Contract Referencing Comprehensive Classification and Compensation Study with Human Resources. You do have a handout at your desk that was in addition to the Board favor being sent out. Mr. Wagner.
September 2021, the Board of Supervisors directed staff to find the firm to conduct a comprehensive classification and compensation study for Henry County, including the sheriff's office and the public school system. Since then, our human resources manager, Michelle By, has worked closely with the committee of employees, including representatives from the school system and the sheriff's office to develop and review proposals from qualified vendors. The committee is recommending the Board award a contract to Evergreen Solutions LLC in the amount of $74,550 to perform this study. There were no funds budgeted for this item. Therefore, if the Board wishes to move forward with the study, funds will also need to be appropriated for this purpose. Staff recommends the Board appropriate the county share of $37,275 from the Board's contingency fund. And it's my understanding that schools have agreed to cover the other half of the cost of the study.
In regard to awarding of this contract and appropriating the needed funds, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend awarding a contract of $74,550 to Evergreen LLC for the study and appropriation of the needed funds of $37,275 from the contingency fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I have one thing to ask. What would we expect as far as a timeline on this?
Sure. It'll be a very in-depth process. The plan is to have, for the company, to have meetings with department managers, employees, focus group activities, online surveys, as well as market analysis to see where compensation is compared to the private sector. The vendor has indicated that they will make every effort to get us enough data that we can consider some of it during the budget planning process, but the likelihood it will not be finished until spring, until spring of 2023.
All right, thank you. That was a question I had. Mr. Dylan.
And I guess the next question would be, what are we going to do with the information when we receive it?
Yeah, so the report will contain considerable amount of information. I suspect it will contain information showing there are certain group of individuals that work for Henry County or the school system or the insurance office that are probably underpaid based on market conditions. There may be some situations that people are not appropriately classified based on their job responsibilities. But at the least, we should be implementing the recommendations of changes to the job description, the payroll tables of everyone. All the employees are assigned to a grade and a step on a table. And then it will be up to you all to meet the obligations that's recommended in the report to meet the needs of salary compensation for the employees or any change in the benefits that they need to. We have mentioned it to the vendor that we don't know how, what the magnitude of this will be. So please give it to us in nuggets, you know, in pieces. So if the Board can't implement the entire plan in one fiscal year, it may be that we can spread it out over a few fiscal years to get it full hit. Generally, you don't want to plan and do nothing with it.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Dylan, for that.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number nine, A Consideration of a Fire Emergency Services Mutual Aid Agreement for Public Safety. Mr. Wagner.
Public Safety Director Matt Tatum is requesting the Board approve a mutual aid agreement with Pennsylvania County for fire and emergency medical services. The agreement formalizes the process already in place of providing both localities with fire and/or EMS assistance, whether it be career or volunteer, should a situation overwhelm either locality's resources. And this is pretty much a formality. There is a verbal agreement between the localities. It's been longstanding for many years. What this does is helps both localities with their ISO ratings on the fireside and could potentially improve response times as calculated by the insurance industry as well. So it formalizes a verbal agreement with Pennsylvania County.
Okay, you have as part of your working papers, a letter from Director Matt Tatum along with your proposed mutual agreement. And as Mr. Wagner said, it more or less gets it formal of what has been verbal in the past. In regard to this mutual aid agreement, what is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve the mutual aid agreement between Henry County and Pennsylvania County for fire emergency services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 10, Comment Period for the 2022 Justice Assistance Grant, known as the JAG Grant for the Sheriff's Office. Mr. Wagner.
The Sheriff's Office has applied for the 2022 Edward Burnings Justice Assistant Grant. We often call it the JAG Grant. The grant requires the governing body to provide a public comment period of at least 30 days. Sheriff Perry is asking the Board to set the public period, excuse me, the public comment period between August 24th and September 24th, and asking anyone that wishes to comment on the grant to contact Sheriff Perry directly, either by email or by phone.
In regard to establishing a comment period for this JAG Grant, what is the desire of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, the Board established a 30-day comment period beginning August 24th, 2022, and ending on September 24th, 2022, to receive additional input regarding JAG grant application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 11, A Consideration of a Resolution Designating Phase 6A of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail as Public Outdoor Recreation Land. Mr. Wagner.
You may recall, we received considerable grant funds to develop a portion of the Dick and Willie Trail, known as Phase 6A. One of the requirements of those grants is to put the land in a conservation fund designated only as public outdoor recreation area. So therefore, we're asking the Board to approve the proposed resolution to designate this area as recreation space.
What is the desire of the Board in regard to approving this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, we'd board approve the attached resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. And kind of tying in with it, Agenda item number 12, Consideration of Resolution Authorizing a Grant Application to the United States Department of Transportation for Phase 7 of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail. Mr. Wagner.
So this is probably the first time you've heard us mention Phase 7 of the Dick and Willie Passage Trail, and it will probably not be the last time you hear us mention Phase 7 of the Dick and Willie Trail. Where staff is requesting consideration of a proposed resolution authorizing an application to the Department of Transportation for funding assistance to their SS4A grant program. Such funds will allow for creating an action plan designed to improve roadway safety in and around the trail corridor. Phase 7 is an area that we're desert calling from Virginia Avenue at the existing trailhead there at El Corral. And the trail will extend to Fielddale and then up to Field Pop Lake. So expect to hear terms such as 7A, 7B, and 7C as we go into the future. As noted, these grant funds here will only provide for the initial planning phases only. It's not purchasing right of ways or building any trail at this point. But it's our first step in moving that project along through the, toward the west of Henry County.
Okay, in regard to approving of this resolution, what action would the Board like to take?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation for you to approve the resolution of Phase 7 of the Dick and Willis Passage Trail.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six-zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number 13, Informational Items. Before I begin with Board members, Mr. Wagner, I believe that you have some special information that you and perhaps our county attorney would like to share with the media and with the Board.
Yeah, we have some, I guess you'd say, breaking news from the Supreme Court of Virginia regarding the city of Martinsville's claim regarding the reversion, the right for their citizens to vote on the matter of reversion. So I asked County Attorney George Law to give us some more information on it.
George, would you mind coming to the podium?
The Supreme Court, if, to set the stage, if you remember, Martinsville requested the Supreme Court of Virginia to enter a writ of mandamus basically stopping any lower court from placing the matter of reversion as a referendum item of the ballot for this November for any time. They essentially, the city's argument was that the special legislation concerning the reversion of Martinsville from a city to a town, the special legislation requiring a referendum by the city voters was unconstitutional and that the Supreme Court should act immediately and block any lower court, i.e. the special court considering reversion, from ordering a referendum. The Supreme Court dismissed the city's petition. They did not declare it unconstitutional and they dismissed their request for writ of mandamus. So that leaves us in a position of this, I should not, they're wrong, shouldn't be confused that there, the city could still pursue other ways of stopping the city voters. City legal team and government could pursue other ways of stopping the city voters from voting on a referendum in the future. But at this point, the Supreme Court did not act. So that matter pending before Supreme Court has been resolved at this time. So it, they're, that now, the special court, three judge panel considering reversion, they had not proceeded to do, to meet at all yet because they were waiting until Supreme Court made their ruling. And so now the Supreme Court has acted. The three judge panel would seem to be in a position to set a schedule to proceed with the matter pending concerning the reversion itself.
Hi, thank you for that information. Before I come back to Mr. Wagner, I will begin taking on informational items, comments from the Board, beginning with Mr. Zaire.
No, sir.
Mr. Dylan.
Yes, sir. I want to thank Ms. Jennifer Gregory for coordinating me getting to the VACO conference and Mr. Dale Wagner for assisting when we ran into a little twits. But great conference, great information, a lot of, you know, good topics that were discussed and I look forward to the conference in Richmond.
And that was last week in Roanoke?
Yes, sir, last week in Roanoke.
Yes, okay, great. Mr. Bryant?
No, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
No, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
No, sir.
And I have none. Mr. Wagner.
Just a couple of things. I made a few notes when Mr. Mark Heath was speaking about some of the activities at the EDC. And I think often we hear the term that there's nothing to do in our community. And I followed back to this past weekend and just a few things that I was aware of that happened this past weekend. On Friday, Henry County held an event to recognize senior citizens in our community. It was a senior appreciation event. Friday evening, they held Movie in the Park. Friday night in Uptown Martinsville was a music event. Saturday during the day was the Smith River Fest. There was a car show in Bassett. And then there was another huge music event in Uptown Martinsville on Saturday night. And I'm sure I'm missing a few things. But there was a few things to do this past weekend in Martinsville, Henry County. Just a couple more items. On the afternoon of Friday, September 9th, and into the weekend, our technology department will be installing a significant upgrade to our financial software package. Normally, we would not schedule these activities during business hours, but this update will require a significant amount of time to accomplish. The staff wanted the extra time on the weekend to make sure all the updates were accomplished and all the computers were up to date prior to the start of the business on Monday. As a result, the treasurer's office and our PSA payment window will not have access to taxpayer or rate payer records. And they will not be able to process any payments on that Friday afternoon. And some of our online payment options will likely be interrupted over the weekend as well. So I want to make you aware of that and we'll make sure that we get that out to the public as well. We recently learned that the Blue Ridge Fire and EMS Academy at joint venture with our public safety department with Franklin County and Patrick County has been awarded a 2022 Achievement Award by the Virginia Association of Counties. And representatives of VACO will attend a future Board Supervisors meeting to formally present that award to our public safety department. Congratulations to our member of our, of our public safety department on receiving that award. The county recently received $49,609 as the first installment of the opioid lawsuit settlement. And if it's okay, or if you want some more information, I'll ask County Attorney George Law to provide a little more background on that topic this way.
That was our, there are many settlements pending. That's the first settlement that's been paid out. There, with that, associated with that, there will be two more payments this year. There, with that, associated with that, there will be two more payments this year, one about the same size, maybe a little bit larger, and then another one significantly larger. So that's just from the Jansen and related distributor settlement. That'll, this is the first of 16, there'll be 16 more payments. And again, there are many other matters related to the opioid litigation that are in various stages of bankruptcy, negotiation for settlement, pending litigation, and all those, you know, some of those are in various stages of, they likely could settle and result in additional annual payments. Most of these payments, because of their size, are going to be structured out over a number of years. And the money we received this time, the advice, you know, a lot of people were wondering, how are we going to spend this? And at first, the advice is to spend it on abatement issues first before we, for a number of reasons I can explain later, but the advice is to spend it on approved abatement items for the opioid problems that have been caused in our community. So, any questions?
Just one last item. There was an article in Martinsville bulletin about the unemployment rate in our community and the demand for workers in our community. And Markey mentioned it briefly during his report as well, the unemployment rate being at 3.2%. The interesting note about the unemployment rate is actually the number of people working in our community, not those not working. Even with our population declines over the last many years, we have more people working today in Henry County. You have to go all the way back to 2003 to get to a time where more people was working than they are now. So that says a lot about our efforts in economic development and what's going on in our economy, particularly in light of population decline over the last few years. This story also referenced some vacancies in the county and the PSA that, just to make you aware of what we're dealing with now, challenges of hiring employees, just, we have five, openings for five deputies, two maintenance positions, one assistant Commonwealth attorney, one public safety employee, one HR assistant, one secretary for the engineering mapping department, two water and sewer technicians, one clerical assistant in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, one office assistant in the clerk of court, excuse me, circuit court, one PSA safety manager, and one technology specialist in the IT department. Those are the vacancies that we're working field right now. And as you can imagine, Michelle and I have been very busy covering this. That's all I have, sir.
With that, takes us to agenda item 14. If someone will cite the reasons for going into closed meeting as allowed by Freedom of Information Act.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed meeting as permitted under the following sections of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Section 2.2, 3711A1, for discussion of appointees to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board, Parks and Rec Board, Southern Virginia Recreation Facilities Authority, and the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program Board. Section 2.2, 3711A7, for discussion of pending legal matters. 2.2, 3711A3, for discussion of acquisition disposal real estate. 2.2, 3711A5, for discussion of as yet unannounced industries.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor is 6-0. Jennifer, I'll see you all upstairs in five minutes. Closed meeting on a motion by Ms. Buchanan, second by Mr. Zaire. Mr. Powell, will you uphold the board, please?
Board members, to the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of the code of Virginia, section 2.2/3711, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. How do you vote? Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryant?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Delick?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Slaughter?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zaire?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Zaire, I believe that you have an appointment to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board for the board's consideration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board appoint Larissa Rash to the Blue Ridge Regional Library Board for an unexpired term ending June 30, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0. Jennifer. Mr. Bryant, for an unexpired term on the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program Board, I believe that you have an appointment for the board's consideration.
Excuse me, sir, did you say unexpired?
It's unexpired term, yes.
I said at least three years on this here.
Yes, sir, clarification, I can clarify there. That was to complete the term that I currently hold.
Okay.
So that is, your nominee would be completing that term.
Okay. Unexpired. Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we appoint Tyra Dillard to the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program Board for an unexpired term.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0. Jennifer. Mr. Powell, do you have any business for the board's consideration prior to a recess?
No, sir.
Mr. Wild?
Yes, sir.
Board members?
Yes, sir.
If not, we'll stand in recess and start promptly at our 6:00 PM evening session. Like to call the August 23, 2022, meeting of the Henry County Board of Supervisors back to order from our recess from this afternoon. Like to welcome all of our visitors. Remind you, if you want to be placed specifically on the agenda for any of our regular meetings, you must sign up seven days in advance of the meeting and to be put on the agenda. The county administrator is the contact person for the board. However, the public may address the board under the agenda item, matters presented by the public that we will take up later in this meeting tonight, that is agenda item number 21. Again, welcome, everyone. Thank you for coming out and participating in your county government. We have one special guest with us tonight, Parker Sidely. Please stand. He's a member of Troop 168 out of Ridgeway here, as many scouts have come to meetings in the past as part of their merit badge requirements. Welcome here tonight. Parker is the grandson of Mike Sidely, who at one time sat in this chair here. And so Parker, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Our first agenda item is, agenda item 15, general highway matters. We have with us Lisa Hughes from BDOT. We also have accompanying Lisa tonight, Todd Bowling. Todd is an area construction engineer for BDOT, serving the Bristol area, and he's kind of subbing for David Kaiser tonight.
Doing a little cross-training, so.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Thank you. I've got for the board's consideration a resolution for the addition of Dupont Road into the state secondary system.
Right, the board has had an opportunity to review this as part of your working papers. What is the pleasure of the board in regard to the consideration of this resolution and adopting this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation to approve the resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0. Jennifer.
And just a few miscellaneous items. We finished mowing a second round on our primary roads, and we've started our secondary mowing in the Ridgeway area, and we'll be moving this way. Paving, we finished paving on Blackberry Road, we moved to Stone Stairy Road next, probably tomorrow in fact. And that section goes from Hales Fish Pond Road to Hall Harbor Road. Want to also bring your attention to the bridge project down here at Reed Creek, Reed Creek Bridge, the northbound bridge. That work will be starting and actually begin to impact traffic after Labor Day around September the 7th. So we'll be closing one lane while we work on the other. And a smart scale project we have in Laurel Park around Dogwood Drive. Now, we plan to start, do some survey work by the end of the year, and that'll enable us to begin design next year and get that project to construction. And that's all I have.
Lisa, jumping back to the, mentioning the bridge over Reed Creek, so that the public has knowledge of this, what is the expected timeline?
Yes, that is a two-year project. So it will be under construction for two, at least two construction seasons. And we'll be running one lane of traffic, and we'll be switching traffic back and forth. The first stage is to close the outside lane, the right lane, and run traffic in the median. And then they'll allow us to work on that side, and then we'll have to switch traffic back. So we'll do that two, three times till we get.
Is it identified where you will actually start the merger, how far up to 220 business will?
Yeah, we'll start it, it'll start before you start down the hill there at Seminole.
Seminole, okay.
Yes, we'll be bringing them over and then bringing them back right before the car dealer she up.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Hughes, got another question for you. When does the naming of the bridge officers, Memorial Bridge? When's the most?
We're going to schedule something when it cools off a little bit, probably September.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you for the, I'm sorry, thank you for the bridge completion there on Horse Pester Price Road.
Turned out well.
Yes.
Some of the best rides I've ever seen, so.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
The curve out there, you said you're going to do that safety project? Is that started now? I mean, it's been working out there, so I didn't know if that was yours or if that was Sam's.
The landowner wanted to do some work before we came in. We've got trackhoe, we've got excavator, we've got one project in Bassett to do a pipe, and we'll move it there, and then hopefully he'll be ready for us in there.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 16, we have a public hearing for rezoning application, R-22-12. Joseph Clark, we have with us Director of Planning and Zoning, Lee Clark. Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located at 177 Wheeler Avenue. It's in the Collinsville District. Taxent number is 297 lot 74. The applicant hears request for the rezoning of approximately 79,107 acre from suburban residential district to commercial district B1, and the applicant wishes to convert this existing building into a nice new metal facility. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend that the rezoning request be approved.
I'll open the public hearing to take any input on this at 6:06 PM. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:06 PM. Mr. Bryant, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we recommend the rezoning request be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor is 6-0. Jennifer. The next item, agenda item 17, public hearing rezoning application, R-22-13. Randy and Tina Williams, Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located across from the address of 2521 Reed Creek Drive. It's in the Reed Creek District. Taxent number is 166 lot 181N. The applicant hears request for the rezoning of just over 2 acres from suburban residential district to agricultural district A1. The applicant wishes to construct accessory storage buildings on this property for personal use. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend that the rezoning request be denied based on the character of the existing neighborhood being suburban residential. All the surrounding road fronted properties are residentially zoned, and they must have their accessory buildings on the same property as the main house.
I'll open the public hearing to take input on this at 6:08. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Anyone seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at 6:08. Mr. Slaughter, I believe this is in your district?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As bad as I hate it, because I would love for these vehicles and these, all this other stuff to be inside of a building, but from the neighbors and stuff that I've received calls from and talked to, and I understand where they're coming from, that there's a garage building right next to their house, and not a house and a garage behind or whatever. I think I'm going to have to go along with the planning commission's denial of the thing.
Second. Is that in a form of a motion?
Yes.
We have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is 6-0. Jennifer. Agenda item number 18, public hearing rezoning application, R-22-14. Katie Wenset, Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located immediately south of the address of 2090 Action Road to Nyruswood District. Taxent number here is 559 is lot 160D. The applicant hears request for the rezoning of approximately 2 acres from agricultural district A1 to commercial district B1. The applicant wishes to construct a separate garage on the property to conduct a small engine repair business and potentially expand to do auto repair in the future. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommend the rezoning request be denied. The character of this existing community is clearly agricultural A1 and not commercial district B1.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at 6:10. Is there anyone wishing to address the board on this rezoning application?
I do have one question. In speaking with Ms. Wenset, she asked about, I guess, a future solar farming zone for this area. Can you speak on that a little bit if there's, and I don't know the accuracy of that, I'm just wanting to make sure that her questions are answered?
Yeah. That could take a really long time. I'm probably working with about 17 different solar companies all at the same time. Yes, there are multiple solar farms that are either in the application phase, been approved, or just in the planning phase, ranging anywhere from 1,200 acres to 300 acres. Those properties do not require a rezoning to commercial district. Back when we determined quickly that we needed a solar ordinance, because these things were coming, and they were coming quickly and imminently, we determined the best way to handle the solar farms was through a special use permit in front of the board of zoning appeals. That process worked so far. Solar farms are a unique animal by themselves. They are typically on agriculturally zoned property. It does not change the zoning of the property. It very much changes the use of it though. Solar farms, I think it's kind of a misnomer. They're not really farms. They're solar electrical generating facilities, but they're not commercial in nature. There's no retail sales aspect to it. They're benign, they don't make any noise, there's no traffic. We could talk a long time about solar farms, but I really don't see the comparison.
Okay, and you're just getting asked, another question would be, when you have these areas that are zoned, what does it take for that zoning designation to change?
Okay, that's a legitimate question. The role of the planning commission is to evaluate the existing character of an area, not just that one particular piece of property that we're talking about, but the whole area.
Okay.
Zoning's been in effect in Henry County now for about 33 years. Every piece of property in Henry County is zoned as something. So there, every property has some zoning classification to it. Zoning tries to promote continuity, and you try, when you're allowing for development, to have that development. for development, to have that development fit where it's taking place. That's really the whole purpose of zoning. We try, I try to allow people to do what they want with their property as much as I possibly can, but their rights stop where someone else's rights begin. I wish everyone to be able to do what they want with their property, just not to adversely affect their neighbors or their neighborhood. We've had other property, other requests similar to this just for the last few months, as a matter of fact. And we've seen what getting the cart in front of the horse, and when someone actually starts a use on a piece of property before they're zoned correctly, what it can do to change the character of that community. And, yeah, from the planning commission standpoint, we don't think it's the right thing to do. You guys are policymakers, you make the recommendations. Our recommendation is that it, it's an agricultural area, and we think it ought to stay that way.
Is there any time, I guess, and I'm not going to ask too many more questions, but is there any time that the conversations are had in reference to the changing dynamics of a community?
Absolutely.
And who all is involved in that conversation as to what that community, or those community members prefer the area to be zoned as?
Right, yeah, what you're getting into it now is talking about something that is, does get into more of a policy decision.
Okay.
And it's something that, that, from my standpoint, it's a goal of mine over the next couple of years, to get into what's called a, a comprehensive plan. That's where that discussion takes place. A comprehensive plan is, is pretty much just what it sounds like, is comprehensive. And part of a comprehensive plan is planning for future growth. And then you zone those areas for the way you want it to see it grow. If you want it to see it grow in a particular direction, I say residential, and we've got multiple residential classifications, you plan for water and sewer lines to be extended into those areas. If you want to see industrial development, you upgrade your facilities to allow for that to happen. If you want to preserve the rural nature of the community, you zone it that way. That's the opportunity you take to change the character. If you think an area is moving in a different direction, great, that happens all the time. And you change your comprehensive plan to reflect that, and then every time we approve a rezoning, we're taking a step in moving that community in a different direction.
Okay. Thank you.
You will?
Yes, sir.
We're still in the public hearing phase of this. Is there anyone else wishing to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, we'll close the public hearing at six seventeen. Mr. Dillard, I believe this is in your district?
Yeah, it, it is, and following, you know, the advice of our experts, you know, I, I will make a motion that we deny this, but I hope we can have some conversations with other folks, you know, Lee, you and I spoke, and there's an area down in Sandy Level that's labeled agriculture, and I'm still trying to see that, but I, you know, we appreciate it, but, you know, I do make the recommendation, the motion that we, you know, deny this request.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item nineteen, public hearing rezoning application R dash twenty-two dash fifteen. Glenn T. Young, Mr. Clark?
Okay, this property is located on the northeast side of Deerfield Lane, approximately a tenth of a mile north of Stone's Dairy Roads in the Blackberry District. Tax debt numbers are twenty-five-nine-nine lots forty-A and forty-C. The applicant's request to rezonate in two lots, one consisting of approximately four acres, and the other consisting of approximately six tenths of an acre. The lots are proposed to be rezoned from suburban residential district to rural residential district, and the applicant wishes to market the property for sale for the potential placement of manufactured homes. Following the public hearing, both the planning commission and staff recommended that the rezoning request be approved. And this is a good example, Mr. Dillard, if, if, I don't know if the zoning map is actually in your working papers, it, it usually is. You can see where we've already done multiple rezonings to rural residential in that area, not necessarily on Stone's Dairy Road, but off the road, you see those green areas there. So that's an example of something that is moving in a different direction, and this recommendation of rezoning to rural residential is consistent with that moving somewhat in a different direction.
I will open the public hearing to take input on this rezoning application at six nineteen. Is there anyone desiring to address the board on this rezoning application? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, I will close the public hearing at six nineteen. This happens to be in my district, I have visited the site. It is not unlike several other structures in the area that are zoned rural residential, they're single wides, double wides, just a, a little bit of everything. And again, taking this from SR to rural residential pretty much fits in right in the character of the community. I can't make a motion from the chair, but I would wish that one of you all would make it on my behalf to approve this.
Mr. Chairman, I move the rezoning request be approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Agenda item number twenty, we have a presentation by the Henry County Martinsville Firefighters Association. We have with us tonight, Mr. Lee Cooley. Mr. Cooley?
Oh, the fire association of Henry County, we want to appreciate what y'all do for us. Without y'all's help, we couldn't run the cause. Financials is unbelievable nowadays. So, we presenting you with a shirt that we've come up with, a logo for the association, all the partners on that. City of Martinsville went and volunteered and paid, so we've got everybody's patch, even volunteer city on it. We appreciate what y'all do for us, and hopefully you appreciate what we do for you.
Absolutely.
So, I'm going to give these to Dale, so if you don't give the shirt, not my fault.
Mr. Cooley, thank you for being here tonight, and it goes without saying to each and every board member, we appreciate each and everything the volunteers do and the hours that you give. We made mention of the service hours and those that are committed to service earlier this afternoon, prior to opening the meeting, and it's not only your service, but the time given up by family members as well as you're providing that to the community, and we do appreciate that. Thank you for being here tonight.
And there is a lot of projects starting, Bassett's getting a lot of trouble, Ridgeway's getting ready to purchase a bumper, and Horse Pastor's getting ready to replace theirs. So it's a lot of projects in the board.
Yes, sir. Agenda item number twenty-one, matters presented by the public. Do we have anyone wishing to address the board tonight under matters presented by the Anyone? Seeing and hearing no indication as such, that takes us to agenda item twenty-two. If someone will make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor? It is six zero, Jennifer. Everyone have a good evening.